Welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees, Joliet Junior College, Tuesday, August 20th, 2024. Karen, can you do the roll call, please?
Trustee Broderick.
Present.
Trustee Garcia-Guian.
Present.
Trustee Harris.
Present.
Trustee Lee. Trustee Mahalik.
Here.
Trustee Morales. Trustee Queenie.
Here.
Trustee Bazinski.
Here.
You do have a quorum.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the meeting. I'd like to also welcome a couple of the previous board members that are hiding in different spots throughout the crowd. Item 1.13, the Pledge of Allegiance. And Trustee Garcia-Guian, can you lead us in the pledge, please?
(Inaudible)
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 Item 1.2, Communications. Kelly Roder tonelli.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you. This evening, I am delighted to share two videos with you. One from Dr. Paul Schrick, who is the superintendent of the Troy Community Consolidated School District 30C, as well as Dr. Teresa Rouse, who's the superintendent of Joliet District 86. And I think you're going to sense the themes throughout tonight. In a bit, my colleagues, Dr. Irvin, Kristi Malvi, and Dr. Gray will share the immense success of our Future Wolves inaugural Future Wolves Summer Camp and the investment and expansion of the kids' college. So I think you can see there's some people out here in the audience proudly wearing their Future Wolves shirts, and I think in a bit you'll see why. And so for its inaugural year, we really wanted to partner with District 86 in Troy, and given the fact that we just completed a few weeks ago a very successful summer camp, we've got two videos from both superintendents to share with you this evening. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Teresa Rouse, and I am the proud superintendent of Joliet Public Schools District 86. I'm here to say thank you in a big way to JJC for their partnership with our elementary school students this past year. This summer, we had a great time sending some folks to the Future Wolves Summer Camp. It was, they had so much fun. It was great to be able to be there and welcome them as they arrived on campus. I know they had a great time. All the staff looked like they were getting ready for a wonderful week with them as well. It is so important that we continue this partnership with our K-12 students all the way into the higher education realm, and the partnership with JJC is a critical one. Looking forward to many, many more times that we can send students for summer camp, to some of the summer classes that go on, but also just that notion of partnership of expansion, of awareness of the values and the opportunities that are right here at Joliet for all of our students, to help them with advancement of their careers and their education beyond our schools. Thank you again so much to the leadership at Joliet Junior College and the partnership that we have. We look forward to many, many more opportunities together. Have a great evening.
Recording.
Well, good afternoon to the JJC board. I wanted to reach out. My name is Paul Schrick. I'm superintendent for Troy School District. Wanted to thank the board for the opportunity this past summer to have our students participate in the Future Wolves project. We understand the camp filled up almost instantly, so it was a success before it even got started. So thank you so much for allowing our students to have an opportunity to be a part of this. As far as the scholarships that are associated with it, we love the fact that if it's available, more of our students would be able to participate. This is a great opportunity, we know, for our students to see the college, start thinking about this. Maybe they learn something they don't already know. It'll give them some direction as they continue to move forward through their educational career here at Troy, and then in high school, wherever they should go locally, hopefully for high school, and find themselves at JJC. We appreciate the opportunity for the partnership. We know that there's value there, and we know that for our families, there's tremendous value, because in this area alone, there's so many things that JJC offers our students in terms of programs that where they could start before they leave and go to a four-year college. They can do programs here. They can also participate in trades. They can participate in other programs that are two-year programs that are viable career options. So we're very much interested and eager to participate with JJC and grow that partnership with the college as we continue to move forward. So again, thanks so much for the Future Wolves. It's a great place to start, and we look forward to working together in the future. Thanks so much.
Item 1.3, Proclamations. 1.3.1, Board of Trustee Approval of September as Hispanic Heritage Month Proclamation. Robert Morris.
Chairman Bazinski, trustees of the board, members of the JJC community, it is my distinct pleasure to introduce to you Felix Rodriguez, who will read this evening's proclamation. Felix is a JJC student. He is deeply connected to both poetry and the Latino community. He is dedicated to pursuing higher education in English to advance his poetry and help others find their place in their community. Felix's life mission is embodied in the words of Lord Tennyson's "to strive, to seek, to find, and not to yield." Felix is currently the president-elect of Latinos Unidos. He is currently the office support intern under CMOS and is also a CMOS ambassador. So I present to you Felix.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Felix. I will be reading the proclamation. Proclamation Hispanic Heritage Month 2024. Whereas citizens of the Hispanic ancestry comprise a significant percentage of the residents of Illinois Community College, District Number 525. And whereas it is the goal of Joliet Junior College to provide its students with a comprehensive curricular and co-curricular educational experience with consideration given to the contributors of all society of identifiable groups within American history and culture. And whereas contributions of the citizens of Hispanic ancestry to all history and culture of the United States are invaluable and abundant. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees, Illinois Community College, District Number 525, Joliet Junior College, counties of Will, Grande, Kendall, LaSalle, Cankey Key, Livingston, Cook, State of Illinois hereby proclaim September 15th throughout October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month in Illinois Community College, District Number 525, adopted this day, 20th of August, 2024.
Thank you.
(Inaudible) Considerado que los ciudadanos de descendencia hispana constituyen un porcentaje significado de los desertes de Distrito Número 525 de Illinois Community College y considerando que el objetivo del Joliet Junior College es proporcionar a sus estudiantes una experiencia educativa, curricular y poco curricular integral que tenga en cuenta las contribuciones de todos los grupos socialmente identificables dentro de la historia y la ciudad estadounidense. Y considerando que los contribuciones de los ciudadanos de descendencia hispana a la historia y cultura de los Estados Unidos son invaluable y abundantes. Y considerando que Joliet Junior College ha recibido la designación de institución de servicio a los hispanos y esta completa con sus comunidad hispana y el logro de sus metas a las aspiraciones profesionales a través de la expansión de las oportunidades educativas para los estudiantes hispanos y su comunidad. Por tanto, se ha resultado que en la junta directiva de Illinois Community College, District Número 525, Joliet Junior College, Distrito de Will, Grande, Kendall, LaSalle, Cankey Key, Livingston, y Cook, Estado de Illinois, por la renuncia a la proclama del 15 de septiembre al 15 de octubre como el mes de gerencia hispana. En la Illinois Community College, District Número 525, estará la bandera de mes de gerencia hispana en celebración de sus estudiantes y su comunidad adoptada este día 20 de agosto de 2024.
Thank you.
At this point, the chair is seeking a motion to also include the last line on the English version of raising the Hispanic Heritage Month flag in celebration of its students and community, similar to the last line on the Spanish side.
(Inaudible).
Yeah?
(Inaudible).
Let's see. Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do we have the flag available to show?
We do.
Thank you. Mr. John Jake Mahalik has served as a dedicated college trustee for eight years, and whereas Mr. Mahalik is a proud JJC alumnus, lifelong District 525 resident, and local business owner, all experiences he has used to ensure the best outcome for the college and its students. And whereas Mr. Mahalik's focus on fiscal responsibility, enrollment management, and student success have been key tenants of his trusteeship, including leadership of the Building and Grounds Board Committee, and whereas Mr. Mahalik's community service extends beyond JJC and includes Joliet Rotary and Easter Seals, where he has contributed his time and leadership to enhance our community, and whereas Mr. Mahalik has championed the college's transformation through financial growth, new facilities and programs while supporting two college presidents during his tenure. And whereas Mr. Mahalik's time on the board includes unwavering advocacy for students, employees, and leadership through civil discourse and consensus building, all of which have left an indelible mark on the college's history and ensured its continued success into the future. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Illinois Community College, District Number 525, Joliet Junior College, counties of Will, Grande, Kendall, LaSalle, Cankey Key, Livingston, and Cook, State of Illinois, does hereby recognize and commend Mr. Mahalik for his distinguished service as a Joliet Junior College trustee, adopted this 20th day of August, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
(Inaudible)
And Mr. Mahalik and Bob Wonderlich, if you guys would like to join them up there?
So Jake, on behalf of a very grateful institution, thank you for your many years of service. You are going to be very difficult to replace, my friend. So we have several items for you, none of which are trustee Lamborghini, unfortunately, but we've got a
That wasn't in the budget.
Exactly. We've got a plaque for your many years of service, and we've got some other things in here.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
(Applause) So I'm only going to take about three hours on this speech. I know it gets like ten minutes. So I just think reflecting, seven years ago, seven years ago, I got elected to the board. I was newly married with zero kids and a lot less grace up here. So JJC is a great organization, institution. I know the board's going to do a great job leading it in the future. So appreciate my time. If it wasn't for family commitments and business commitments, I'd serve out my term, but it's been a great run. Thanks, everyone. And let's get on with the meeting. Appreciate it. Thanks.
(Applause)
Okay, so I must be a little old, because I remember when Rudy and I were on the Board of Trustees when Jake was born. Item 1.4, Chair's recommending or requesting a motion to go into a closed session to discuss items under 2C2 and 2C21. So moved.
Second.
How long were you expecting to be in closed session?
Thirty minutes or less.
Okay.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 1.5, Chair Calls for Motion in a Second to Return to Public Session.
Second.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 1.6, Public Comments. Karen, do we have any public comments?
None that I'm aware of.
Thank you. Item 1.7, A Moment of Silence. Dr. Nemahl?
Chairman Bazinski and trustees of the board, members of the JJC community, I'm asking you to join me in a moment of silence for the following individuals. Mary Ann Kowalski, mother of Donna Bennett, in the VP of Finance and Administrative Services Office. Genevieve Tadic, grandmother of Jennifer Baines, in the president's office. James Donnelly, father of Colleen Dial, nursing assistant professor. Winifred Whalen, mother of Suzie Betcher, in our math department. And Chairman, if you would, I just want to take a moment. You know, there are three names I'm about to read, and you know, they are the names of three students that tragically lost their lives over the summer, JJC students. So I'm asking the college community to join me in remembering Alex Reamer, Courtney Lee Miller, and Jayah Jones.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 1.8, Selected Reports. 1.8.1, Future Wolves and Kids College. Dr. Nemahl?
Chairman and trustees of the board, members of the JJC community, thanks so much. I want to just take a moment to tee this up. We have a couple of presentations and some individuals in the audience today here to celebrate. And you'll hear a lot about Future Wolves. You'll hear a lot about its beneficiary, I suppose, the kids' college program here at JJC. But I want to just take a moment to highlight and maybe share a story that I shared with the college community at Fall Convocation. About a year ago, I challenged the cabinet in pairs to adopt design thinking projects in different categories. One of those categories, and Chairman, you'll recall, and trustees of the board who were on the board when I first started, that I made a commitment that all enrollment-related activities would be future-focused and long-term investments in our communities. You've seen that through our dual credit initiative, and you're seeing the next to-be-celebrated initiative that, frankly, not a lot of community colleges are doing. There aren't many community colleges that are paying any attention, making any significant investments in elementary school children. So we partnered with, and you saw this in the video, with Dr. Schrick at Troy, with Dr. Rouse with District 86. And one of, I know it was tough to hear Dr. Schrick there, but one of the things he highlighted is some scholarships that were offered to students in both Districts 86 and Troy Unified or Troy Consolidated School District, and investment in those two neighboring elementary school districts to participate in kids' college. Now what you're about to hear is really the brainchild, the result of a challenge that I lofted to our cabinet members in pairs, and both Kristi Malvi and escort Tina Irvin embraced that challenge, embraced that challenge, and out of that design thinking, their design thinking lab emerged the Future Wolves Initiative. So without further ado, Future Wolves.
Good evening, Chairman Bazinski, trustees of the board, and members of the JJC community. It is both a privilege and an honor to share with you highlights of our Future Wolves Initiative. And before I get started, you're in for a treat, but before I get started, I have to thank the folks that made this happen, that helped us execute it. Dr. Nemahl, thank you for encouraging us to think outside the box and trusting us to deliver the visions that we had of the Future Wolves, and thanking the board for supporting our Future Wolves Initiative. Kristi, my partner in crime, thank you. And Kristi and I could not have done this, but we had support from one young lady that has only been with the college for a short year, and without her, we would not have been able to pull this off. So Amina, can you please stand? Thank you so much. So Kristi and I are proud grandmas, and we needed some young legs to help us out. But it wasn't just Amina. We were able to get 55 JJC employees. Many were faculty who came back. You know our faculty. There are not too many here through the summer. They came back to support us, and 55 employees, you know, spent their summers with us for that whole week, and we thanked them. We had departments which included corporate and community services, foundation, marketing, food services, risk management, our campus attorney, we put him in as well, and many more. And we just want to say thank you. So we have some of our Future Wolves volunteers here. If you helped in any way, either at the camp or behind the scene, can you please stand? Can you give them a hand? Thank you so much for investing into our Future Wolves. Okay, slideshow. Guess what? Slight show for you?
You can turn it.
I have it?
So while he's fixing that, the world is trying to tell higher ed professionals, our
students, and our parents that there's no value, or less value to education than it was 20 years ago, and that they don't need education to get a good job. But we know that's just not true. And I'm sure a lot of your parents told you like my mom did, get your education, because can't nobody take that away from you. And as professionals, that's what we're trying to plant in the seeds of our youth. And data shows that 47% of the individual surveyed, they value in education, but only, only 47%, and only if you don't have to get a student loan. If you have to get a student loan, it's down to 22% of adults think it's worth it. But what that does is help two-year colleges like ours. More adults are valuing two-year colleges versus four-year colleges and universities. So that puts us in a good place. Our Future Wolves Initiative was designed to plant that seed of education, opportunity, and possibilities in the little minds of five-year-olds up to 10-year-olds. And we were very successful in doing that. We piloted the camp to kick off the Future Wolves Initiative with Troy, C, and District 86. And we did that because those two districts mirror the students that we support here today. Some of them actually have siblings on campus here and wanted to connect with their siblings. We also wanted to be where there was a need. Over 55% of the families that came had two or more kids, and we tried to accommodate as many of those as we could. And those who have kids know how much it would cost for two or three kids to go to camp at one time. So we sent the information out to Troy and District 86, and within 10 minutes, it was full. I was shocked. Dr. Nemahl was shocked. The superintendents were calling Dr. Nemahl, saying Troy took mine, 86 took mine, but they were actually full. And then Dr. Nemahl was calling me, what's going on? I'm like, I don't know. But it was such a need, and we had almost 300 students on the waitlist. But we were able to register 50 participants. And these individuals, these kids, you see those paw prints? They were hopping on those paw prints into the building. Parents were taking signs in front of JJC, welcome Future Wolves in English and Spanish. These students were able to experience so much. They were able to experience our culinary, our portable planetarium, our athletics. They were on a real college soccer field, playing with a real college coat. They did their STEM courses. They were able to cook. They were able to do 3D labs and just much, much more through that program. And this is just our 55% with two or more children. We did an assessment for our parents to get feedback to see how we could do better. Of the parents' survey, 100% said we did. They were very satisfied. And the comments were short of "do it again and do it longer." So we were very happy that our parents were happy. And we got a lot of testimonials, parents just over and over again saying, thank you to JJC, thank you to the volunteers for giving our kids this experience. And these are just a few pictures. I like to focus on the one in the middle. That's our Cronin one-room schoolhouse. That little schoolhouse is on our property and is history. Over 150 years of history is in that little classroom, and lots of memories and stories. But if you think about it, our classrooms today look a lot like that. We might have more modern furniture, but they look a lot like that. So during our Future Wolves camp, we tried to give them a different learning experience in our portable planetarium Caitlin. So that's that little dome there. It's not little, it's actually pretty big. It has a projector in it, and they can actually learn in a different environment. And it could be the stars and a planetarium or planets, but it also can be math and science. They can go to different countries and experience that in this really cool structure, our portable planetarium. The fire truck was amazing. Our little guys were so intrigued with the truck and the hose and how big the nozzle was, and the hands just stayed in the air, full of questions. They know about what firefighting is. They've touched a truck. They've been on a truck. So we were able to share those type of experiences with our youth. And a big thank you. I'm not going to read all of that. I've been told. Do not read all these names. But you have to give credit to the people that do the work, and there was a lot of hands involved in making this successful. So we have some represented here today. Thank you. I, pretty much every department helped us with this. So thank you. And we have a little video we would like to close with. (Music) And those are our Future Wolves, and we will know if they come here, because they all have student IDs. So these are our first Future Wolves, and they think JJC is fun. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Chairman, we have, you know, 50 students that participated in Future Wolves, and as a result of this tremendous effort, all of this notoriety, it benefited our kids' college program here at JJC. So I'd like to invite Dr. Gray to share some of the successes of kids' college this summer.
Good evening, Chairman Bazinski, trustees of the board, and members of the JJC community. And I have with me today Amanda Benjoritis. Well, as of last week, she was a coordinator in our community education program. Well, as of last, last week, she was a coordinator in our community education programming, which is all about Kids College. Really a better title for her, she was recently promoted, so starting yesterday, her title's different. But a better title as she was working on Kids College was truly mastermind of Kids College. We've already seen, as Dr. Nemmo said, that we've become like this beneficiary of how successful the Future Wolves Initiative has been. And I just have to say, it was really, really a fun week, not just for the kids, but for us as well. You know, it was just, it brought life and excitement and was, it was pretty amazing. So we've had, if we can bring up the presentation. We have actually had Kids College for 20 years, since 2004. And the idea, similar to Future Wolves, but these are, these kids are just a little bit older, is to have affordable, accessible programming, get them in JJC, get them to see what is possible. And if we can, let's see if I can go to the next slide. So we started putting some of the numbers together once, this summer, because this summer was truly an explosion in Kids College. We've had great years. We've had great program, but never have seen growth like this. So last year, we served 118 kids in Kids, Kids College. This summer, 434, which is a 267% growth. And I think there were a lot of factors that played into it. For sure, the collaboration with Future Wolves. Dr. Nemmo's office provided financial support, paying for student, the teachers' salaries this summer. Also providing vouchers to our families in District 86 and in Troy. And with that, I'm going to let Amanda take the next part.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. So yeah, just to finalize this slide, so we also got some additional funding from a grant that we applied for through Corporate and Community Services. So we had two camps that we ran, Roblox and Real Life and It Takes a Village camps. And we got $2,000 of funding for both of those camps. So that was a really awesome funding opportunity for us. And then another thing I want to point out is that we had 48 Kids College offerings over the summer. Typically Corporate and Community Services run at a 60% run rate. And that's a good run, run rate for us. We're a revenue generated department. And so we have to cover our costs and then we always, of course, want to make some revenue. So the fact that we were able to run 85% of our classes this summer is phenomenal. Some of our highlights, so our popular one-day programs. A really cool partnership that we had this summer was with the Will County Forest Preserve. We had a Junior Naturalist Day. They were down by the pond. They sampled the water. They caught bugs with these really cool nets. They looked at some plant species. So it was just cool to see that, you know, JJC is more than just buildings. It's a campus. And there's lots of things to do here besides just walk into a building, which is cool to see. And we also partnered with the EDC, the Entrepreneurial and Business Center for our Young Innovators Day. So if you've ever seen the show Shark Tank, that's what these students were doing. So they got to come up with an idea or an invention and then they pitched it to some sharks and that was just such a fun camp. And then I do want to thank Chief Campbell, who's here today. We had a police officer for the day with the JJC Police Department and we had over 30 kids who participated in that. And it was just truly an awesome experience. As you could see, they all got to sit in the police car and I think that was the highlight of the day. Besides the very nice cups of candy that the police gave them at the end of the day. And then some popular camps that we had. We have never offered a Kids College offering out of the Morris campus before. This summer, we tried a Roblox game space design out of Maine and Morris and both camps filled. Which was just so awesome to see. The kids loved it. It worked just as well as it does at Maine, at Morris. And so we can't wait to grow this programming out of the Morris location. We also worked with Maria Rayback, who I think is still here, with Want to be an Architect. And those, both of those camps, one was a teen offering and one was a elementary school kid offering and they both did phenomenal. It was such a fun program to, to jump in on and look at and she is just wonderful in who she is. So thanks, Maria. And then also, we partnered with Juliet Central High School. Steven Zeko is a teacher there who oversees the Dungeons and Dragons Club through Juliet Central High School. And I had thought it'd be a cool idea to kind of do like more of a club style offering. And so we did a Dungeons and Dragons style class. And so these students came once a week and participated in this club. And hopefully if they go to Juliet Central, they participate in that there and maybe even, you know, that comes, becomes a thing with OSA. So it was super cool. Looking ahead, so some marketing initiatives that we did that I hope the department continues is our Wiley Reads Program. So we went into a District 86 school, Carl Sandberg Elementary School with Wiley. And we went into the classrooms and read books and gave away vouchers and it was a really awesome experience. 3D print tours, so continuing again, just to foster these relationships with Troy and District 86. Our community partnerships with the YMCA, we worked with them on a couple camp experiences this summer. Our instructor search, making sure we're finding quality instructors to teach these programs. And then just continuing to grow programming out of Romeoville and the Morris location. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you so much.
Item 1.8.2, the Faculty Union Report. Dr. Bob Mersing.
Hi, everybody. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak to you. Just looking at the clock. President Nemmo thinks that I missed our meeting last Thursday. I'm just five days and three hours and 55 minutes late. So I do apologize for that. Just a few things really. Well, first, it's the beginning of a new semester and we're all excited about that. And a lot of us just got into the classroom today and yesterday. And we have a lot of full classes, which is great. And a lot of people on campus who are looking to learn and a lot of teachers back who are excited about being back. So. I'd like to say something about the, the Future Wolves thing. When I first heard about this, Dr. Nemmo told me in, in the meeting that I showed up for on time. And when I first heard it, I thought it was, and I agree, and I still believe it's a wonderful idea. Because I can remember one of my first experiences in, as a, as an elementary school student, getting an opportunity to go to a local university, to see a play and, and to do that sort of a visit. I later on ended up getting my, one of my degrees from that institution. And there's no doubt that that experience helped me to, I, helped me to, to want that and to want that education. So I, I think it's a great program and obviously you can see it's growing tremendously and as is, as is the Kids College. So. Maria, who already left, is one of our great faculty members. And, but as usual, they all leave before I speak. But I want to say something about Felix, who was here earlier too. Felix, he's, he's gone, I believe. Felix is also, one thing wasn't mentioned, is that he's a poet who writes for The Word Eater and was one of our, and not, one of our, basically, people who selected the pieces to go into the Student Literary Magazine. And he's, he's a great young man. One, let's see, one last thing. Jake, I did not, I, I was not aware that, that Trustee Mahalik was leaving. I've been sort of out of touch for a while. And I do want, and I, I said it to him, but I think I needed to say it to everybody. You've been a great member of this board for, for your seven years. You've been a voice of reason always. You have always been able to just give, have your steady hand. And, and without, and besides that, you worked really hard. And we're going to miss you here. I know as faculty, we're going to miss you here. And I, I know your colleagues are going to miss you here and the people who work at this institution are going to miss you here. Now, I'm, well, my plan for you is to, you know, get those kids grown up, you know, get all that taken care of. And then when you send them off to college at JJC, you can come on back and, and join us again. So.
You can bet your butt that they're coming here. Great college, so appreciate everything about.
No, Jake, thank you. I real, I really mean that. I, I only say that to the people I mean it to. So we appreciate it and appreciate working with you. And anything in the future we can do to make things a little smoother, I'm not going to do, I'm not coming over to work for you. But other than that, anything that doesn't include work, I'm fine.
You just go through the sheet metal program here.
All right, all right. I guess I got, I got another two years to go, I guess. But that's all we, I have for this evening. Thank you again for the opportunity to address the board and address the group here. And we're looking forward to a great semester.
Item 1.8.3, the Adjunct Faculty Union Report. Our first timer, Dr. Barbara Willhen.
So I want you, before you get up there, just look at the clock. It is very rare you get to speak before 7 o'clock or around 7 o'clock. We're usually 8:30, 9 o'clock by the time we get to you. Bob sits here for hours every Wednesday, so.
I'm going to start and finish before 7 o'clock. Thank you very much, Chairman and Trustees and President Nemmo. I, I, this is, I'm not a first timer in really much of anything. So I've been here at JJC since 2016 as an adjunct. I am taking over from Laurel DeScal, who you probably are very familiar with. Laurel is staying on as our Vice President and we are very happy about that as well. We have a very strong contingency in our, in our board. And we appreciate a wonderful relationship with everyone that we've talked to. I've kind of been making the rounds with a lot of the, the directors and chairs and deans and that's a lot of fun too. Learning a lot of new names and new faces because I teach at night and no one's here. I close down usually in the summertime, 10 o'clock and in the, in the evenings, now we're here till about 9:30. So if you need anything from us, we are more than happy to, to help you out. Thank you very much for allowing us to speak.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Item 1.8.4, the Building and Grounds Committee Report.
All right, so Building and Grounds Committee did meet this afternoon and there were some updates regarding some of the construction that has been happening around campus, as some of you who were here over the summer are aware of. So first thing we did hear from them this afternoon was, and Rick Lyman let us know that the AHU unit, which are the.
It's the air handler unit.
Yeah, the air handling units.
Which is our CDB project.
Those have been completed and will, have they finished installing? I believe they said they have some that they'll be running manually for a few weeks and then finishing off the install later this month.
In two weeks, it should be finished off, yes.
Yes. And then they also did replace the, or they're almost finished replacing the crack unit in the IT server room. And hopefully again, that will be done shortly. Oh, that is.
That's done, yeah.
Oh, nevermind, miss, thank you. So that one is done. Then they also did replace the boiler in T Building with a condensing boiler and that has been completed too. And they also have finished the, putting the Building H stair tread replacements in as well as, or, no, and that's where, they have finished also with the lighting replacements.
For the Building H HVAC unit replacement, that's on order and we're looking about 30 to 32 weeks out. So next, next summer, we'll probably be putting those in. So.
Yes. And then there was, they have finished off the underground part of the Vet Tech addition and will be starting on the masonry walls later this week to hopefully have that project finished by the beginning of spring this semester, next coming semester. Then also coming up with in project bids, they did today get the approval to start putting the mental health space out to bid. So hopefully by the September board meeting, we will have a.
Guys will have some, some bids coming in in September to look at and review. They're actually also looking at the Wyndorf's, adding some solar panels there. This is in the beginning part of it. It looks like that it would help significantly with, with our, with our electrical bills. It said, they said in seven years that we paid off in the savings. I think in five years, I think, actually three years, they're projecting $550,000 in, in, in savings and electrical costs for us to have an electrical panels on the building. So that's coming to you guys in the future time as well. And then tonight, as you guys know, we, we did the, we'll be voting on the city center. Oh, the city center update. Is, is, Pat, is this the, the roof, is that going on, is that on tonight, Dr. Nemmo? Got it. So that's it. That concludes the report for the VNG committee.
Thank you. Thank you. 1.8.5, Board Policy Committee Report.
All right, so there is only one policy on the agenda tonight. That's 5.03.00, Title IX Policy. This policy did not go before committee and has not been up for first or second read and yet is on the agenda to be passed. It therefore does not comply with Policy 1.65.00, which states. "Policy amendments. Policy statements are extremely important to every segment of the college community and the public it serves since they are set, since they set the broad general guidelines under which procedures and regulations are developed. In order to ensure that these important policy statements receive input from every segment of the community served, any proposed new policy or revision introduced will be presented as follows for Board of Trustees' Review of Approval. This is a non-division-one policy and therefore the policy should be reviewed by the Board Policy Review Committee in conjunction with the internal review. The policy will then be presented for a first reading and then approved by the Board upon the second reading. The intent of this policy is to allow for sufficient time for study and reaction by the various segments of the college community and the public served by the college. In limited cases where an expedient process is required to comply with a change in law or regulation, approval must be requested from the President and the Chairperson of the Board in advance. Once approved, the policy will follow the same initial review process and will be presented to the Board for approval with one reading." As the Chair of the Policy Committee, I was not made aware of this policy until I received this Board Book. And seeing as how Biden's executive order was shot down by the Supreme Court, because we have three branches of government and the purposes of those three branches of government, Biden's executive order contradicted legislation because his executive order should have been gone through Congress and that's why it was shut down, just like this Board has policies that deserve to go through committee and first and second read so that we are all informed. So as the Chair of this committee, it is, in my opinion, that this policy needs to be tabled until we have further instructions from our Congress.
That would be completing my Policy Committee Review unless you have anything to say.
I can go ahead and add something. So we did receive an email providing an update about this particular policy. So.
An email, but we did not really receive the whole policy. We have not been able to discuss it and I have many concerns with the policy. Should we read it for the public? Let's, let's, should, so that we can.
We just need the Policy Committee Report. We're not going to read the policy yet.
That's good.
Item 1.8.6, Finance Committee Report.
There was no meeting this month, so.
Item 1.8.7, the President's Report.
All right, Chairman, thank you so much. Trustees of the Board and members of the JJC community. As my presentation is making its way to the screen here, I just want to offer a couple of things. First of all, welcome back to the college community, to our faculty. First of all, welcome back to the college community, to our faculty, our staff, our leaders, the Cabinet, our students especially. Welcome back! This is the very first week of classes. And if the parking lots are any indication, enrollment is up. In fact, statistically, it is. So I want to share that before I begin. Headcount at JJC for the fall semester is up 14.48%. Credit hours are up 2.9%. And it's just the first week, or first day, rather, first couple of days of classes. So we anticipate some additional growth. This fall semester is the very first time that we are allowing freshmen, high school freshmen and sophomores to participate in dual credit. So we anticipate some additional growth in that area. Before I begin, just want to thank specifically Nicole Murray, who's the Executive Director of the Will County Habitat for Humanity Board of Directors, or Habitat for Humanity, period. She invited me recently, and I accepted an invitation to join their Board of Directors. And she took me and a few other new Board members on a tour of all the Habitat for Humanity homes in Will County and what that organization's been able to do over the last few years that Nicole has been Executive Director. There's nothing short of exceptional. So just a quick shout out to Nicole and the entire Habitat family there. Jake, what can I say that hasn't already been said, that I haven't said to you in private? Thank you so much for your service to the Board. I'm gonna miss you, I've told you that. Just echo the sentiments of many connected to the college and also in the community. You know, the Maholics are well-known, well-respected. So nice to see, you know, Rudy and Tom here and your mom.
I only had to pay them like fifty dollars.
Okay, well, whatever you paid them. The Maholic name continues to be well-respected in Joliet and beyond. And I think that's a credit to you and your family and really how you not only conduct yourselves, but how you treat people. So on behalf of a grateful college, Jake, thanks for your service to JJC. Maybe our goal should be to try to make Jake cry tonight. I'll keep trying. Chairman, you're up next. The emergency purchase that you see that Trustee Maholic referenced, we'll give a little bit more detail when the time arises. We've got staff ready to provide some technical details, some cost-related details, some timeline details. I'll maybe give a broad overview in a couple of slides here. You know, we haven't met since June, so there have been several things that have happened. One of them is the Foundation golf outing. So I just want to acknowledge, you'll see Dave Conterio there in the lower right-hand corner. You'll see Institutional Advancement Office, Kristi and her leadership. This is Amanda's event, really. And I think the Foundation, again, just pulled off an amazing event. Perfect weather. And just so you know, I don't like heights, but that's me up on the ladder truck tossing all of the golf balls into the hole. And apparently, I did it wrong because three balls ended up in the hole, so. My apologies to those who had to split the prize three ways. You heard enough about Future Wolves. Next year, some of the additional things I'd add is we plan to expand this to different elementary schools across our entire region as part of the Future Wolves Design Thinking Initiative. We've identified, you know, Escortina and Kristi have identified several potential partners. This year, it was District 86 in Troy. The next year, it'll be two different districts. And each year, we'll expand that initiative to different districts across our region. One of the things, I think I've got a picture in here, and I don't, perhaps in the convocation slide. Together with the Foundation, we partnered to purchase a mobile planetarium. So one of the things we have not highlighted just yet, but is absolutely worth noting, this Trackman Planetarium hosts hundreds, if not thousands, of elementary aid school kids each year. Every Friday, they're running up and down the concourse in the one-room schoolhouse that the team referenced earlier. That mobile planetarium transports, you know, it's the traveling Trackman, I believe is what it's called. We're gonna transport that experience to all of those schools in District 86 and Troy, giving more students the opportunity to participate. So again, kudos to everyone who was involved in the inaugural Future Wolves. Now, while things sort of quiet down here on campus, fewer classes, fewer faculty on campus, but many of them, as you saw, Brian was here, Brian Fruits, Maria, Bob's still here, for the record. You know, there's a lot of activity that takes place. And so I take the opportunity during the summer to make a lot of connections, establish new connections, strengthen existing connections. And you'll see some of those here. So just a few things of note, in the lower left-hand corner, that's Dr. Brian Cannetl, the President of Lebonzi Community College. Upper-left-hand corner, Dan Stecken, who is the Superintendent out at Seneca. Our districts are split, his district, rather, is split between IVCC and JJC. So we actually share those students. I do want to take a moment just to acknowledge the retirement of my colleague there, Dr. Cheryl Green at Governor State. She hosted me on campus and was really gracious, spent a couple of hours down there, and more recently announced her retirement from Governor State University. I want to thank Dr. Farmer and Mr. Farmer, Chef Farmer, for joining Tiana and I at the wine tasting, at the alumni wine tasting event. And wine was definitely tasted. The picture in front, center, is highlighting, meant to highlight our growing partnership with Natalie Coleman's organization, After the Peanut. And Kelly Roder Tinnelli was one of the hosts of that event. Just a lot of, lot of fun. Just want to send a special shout out to Representative Avalar, Leader Natalie Manley, a great friend of the college. Representative Avalar hosted her second annual Higher Education Futures Roundtable, where institutions got together and really shared with her some of our challenges and some of the investments we're making in the future of higher education. I want to send a special shout out to Quoz there. Rick is the former Mayor of the Village of Lamont and current Chairman of PACE. Over the next few months, we'll be highlighting our partnership with him to supply additional bus drivers for PACE. And Escortina and Monique are featured there with both Brady and Byron, a celebration of the Will County CED's first inaugural summer internship program, a partnership with Joliet Township High School. I want to thank the NAACP for inviting me to be their keynote speaker at their annual Freedom Fund banquet this year. Want to thank my friend Vince Cornelius there for serving as emcees. You'll see those who joined us, Dr. Gray, Kelly Roder Tinnelli, Tiana, of course, was there, along with Escortina and Trustees Morales and Harris as well. Thank you for joining us that night. So here's just a quick city center update, light touch, very brief, because we'll have some additional, more detailed information on cost timeline and all of those things. This happened on July 14th, right? So here we are on August 20th. I want to thank the Board again for your support for the emergency purchase previously. And here we are again with another request that's been presented to Building and Grounds, that's being presented for your approval here tonight. You know, this impacts 1,200 students. But not only 1,200 students being served in our culinary department, this impacts the entire workforce development arm of the college. This impacts the entire adult education arm of the college. This impacts the Entrepreneurial Business Center here at the college. All entities that are celebrated out of the city center have essentially been nomads since July 14th. They've been housed here on main campus. Some have been housed at Romeo Ville's campus. Some have migrated to a virtual environment. But every single one of them have been disrupted. So we've been flexible. The challenge, of course, is culinary cannot be virtual, right? We've got to improve, we've got to repair, we've got to replace, and that's the plenum that you have before you today. What I'd offer before we move off this slide is the plan before you ensures full operation of the city center building by September 16th. September 16th, the last possible week to avoid significant disruption to our instructional activities at the city center campus. Okay. All right, I want to highlight again DEI's efforts. Again, we are award-winning in that effort. This past week, Dr. Irvin shared with us the HEED Award, a prestigious and rigorous application, mind you, that we were awarded this year. And many of you saw, we are the central region awardees for the Equity Award. There are five regions across the country. We are number one in equity for the central region, and I'm very hopeful that when competing for the national award, that we will emerge victorious. Yes, thank you, Dr. Irvin. So fall convocation was another celebration of Future Wolves, but it was the employees' opportunity to revisit their childhoods, to participate in many of the activities that you heard about today. So here, I just want to thank those who not only served our kids in Future Wolves, but then volunteered to give our employees the exact same experience. So you'll see a lot of scientific, oh, I didn't know Kyno was in this. There were a lot of activities, the mobile planetarium being one of them, and some science-related things. So it was a fantastic event welcoming all of our employees back to campus. Four organizations, the American Red Cross, the Hook of Black Women, the Habitat for Humanity, and the Boys and Girls Club. So we have images here from each of those areas. And I do want to thank Trustees Broderick and Harris for participating in our second annual afternoon of service. And last thing I want to leave the Board with, two years ago, I announced the creation and my family's commitment to fully fund the Namual family endowed scholarship for first-generation students. Funny thing happened, it became fully endowed, along with my family's contributions and the college community's contributions in just 11 months. And in two years' time, with Kristi's help and the Foundation's help, college community and my family collectively, we've raised nearly $60,000 in support. And actually, many of the individuals in this room as well have contributed to this scholarship. So over on the left-hand side, you'll see the very first two Namual scholars. First, Selena Garcia of Bowling Brook. And Richmond Ose Bonsu, the very first two Namual scholars were awarded $1,000 each this fall semester. Chairman, with that, I'll yield back. Thank you. No, I said, trying to make Jake cry. Yeah, I failed at it. No, I want you to try to make him cry now. I feel like I came close.
Trustee Maholic?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Pazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Second. I have a question. I noticed that the meeting went past the 5:00 to 6:22. I know two of us had left, and I know that Jake was not on the phone. Was there a reason it went longer? Only because I see that Kim Villanueva from ICCTA came off at 5:50, and the meeting was still going on till 6:22.
Because with all of our meetings, we didn't end at 5:00.
So did any of us that weren't there miss anything that we should be aware of?
As in the minutes? As it was a closed session, I don't think...
Correct, but I'm asking if there is anything, then should that not be communicated to those of us that weren't, that had to leave at 5:00 or were not on the phone at 5:00, after 5:00?
You could ask your fellow trustees who were present.
Okay. And was there a need to keep Kim on at all or not? Because she came off at 5:50, and the meeting went to 6:22.
No, there was not.
There was not?
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Maholic?
Yes.
Trustee Pazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 1.9.3, Approval of Minutes for the Emergency/Special Meeting Held on August 6, 2024, as amended on the green sheet.
So move?
Second. I have some questions. And bear with me to get my questions. Okay, on this, I did not, I've asked for it, and I asked at the last meeting on how the meeting was called. I still don't see anything regarding the Chair. So we have to create policy, because technically, schools will do. If there's a change, or if there's a meeting that's called, it should be the Chair calling it, if it's an emergency or a special meeting, or the three members that call it. And it should be identified that the Secretary, once the Chair notifies us, the Secretary should then confirm with all of us that it is. So there should be a policy put into place, so that when we have this, there is protocol, so that we know when. Because I went through all my emails, and Jim, I had nothing from you. You said you did it, but I have no emails confirming that you did and no conversation with you. So I'm asking that we do do that for policy. And then the other thing I'm going to ask is, this was identified as, on the agenda, as a special meeting. You have emergency special. And I'm sorry, Brian, but there are, I did ask my group at the ICCTA, and we all pulled up, that special meetings are different from emergency meetings. And I know that Karen needed to have this as an emergency, which in this consideration is for need, so that you didn't have to do an RFP. But this really does fall under special meeting, because they're a hybrid between regular and emergency meetings. They are called special because they're not as frequent as regular meetings, but they happen often enough that it's important to know what they are and what the purpose is. We did know that. When you go to what, according to Robert's Rule, is, emergency meetings are called to address urgent issues that require immediate action to protect public health, safety, or peace. So if we had a blowout where we lost the roof, we would meet immediately after and not have a timeframe of 48 hours. So this should be consistent with what is out there for Robert's Rules and for all of the things following us when we do meetings. This should be identified just as a special meeting. And identified, yes, there was an emergency situation, so that you do have it under the need for not to do an RFP. But it is a special meeting, because we did do the 48 hours. Okay? So we need to correct it on the web, because you've got emergency and special. It's either one or the other. So even like this, this needs to be identified, then, that is, Approval of a Minute for Special Meeting Held on 8/6/2024.
So who made the motion?
Nancy.
I did.
Can you amend your motion to say the special meeting held on August 6, 2024? Or are you willing to?
I have a question, a clarifying question for the attorney. What difference does that make, other than the information that was just stated?
An emergency meeting is a special meeting? We complied with the requirements under the law for a special meeting, but it was an emergency situation under our policy in terms of the expenditure. Call it a special meeting, call it an emergency meeting, I don't think it matters. The point is, we complied with the law, we're here. The vote was appropriate under the law, which required three-quarters approval, so.
So technically, it wouldn't impact if we just changed it to a special meeting, and that's it?
Sure, you can do that.
And Nancy, there's four types of meeting. Regular meeting, closed meeting, special and emergency that are addressed in the Omi Community College Act.
Correct, I'm aware.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I can go ahead and amend the motion. I would like to amend the motion to be the Approval of Minutes for the Special Meeting Held on August 6, 2024. the approval of minutes for the special meeting held on August 6, 2024.
Diane, you second it?
Yes.
You agree? Okay.
The new motion.
And... Hold on one moment. Can you redo the motion, but to include the change that's on the green sheet? So, as amended on the green sheet?
Do I have to say everything?
On the green sheets.
Yes.
Okay. I would like to amend the motion to approve the minutes for the special meeting held on August 6, 2024, as amended on the green sheet, provided.
Correct.
Okay.
Do we still have a second? Next motion.
Okay.
Now we're ready for a vote.
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 1.9.4, Chair seeking a motion for the approval and release of the minutes of the closed-session meetings held on July 28, 2022, August 10, 2022, October 12, 2022, November 9, 2022, December 14, 2022, January 18 of 2023, February 1 of 2023, February 15 of 2023, March 15 of 2023, April 12 of 2023, May 10 of 2023, and June 14 of 2023, and the destruction of the verbatim recording of the closed-session meetings held on July 28, 2022, August 10 of 2022, October 12 of 2022, November 9 of 2022, December 14 of 2022, and January 18 of 2023, and to find that the need for confidentiality exists for all remaining closed-session minutes.
Some moved?
I think you missed the... Did you miss the April 5?
That's the one we're not going to release.
I was going to say, when we just made a motion to amend the motion, don't we still need to approve it for the one that was previous? Because we made a motion to amend it, but then did we vote to approve it?
No, we didn't. Okay. We did right.
Who seconded that?
I second. That's fine, so...
Red approval?
Ready. Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 1.1.0, approval of agenda?
Some move?
Second.
I'm going to make one comment. We, as trustees, should be able to, as all other community colleges are, if a trustee brings something to the agenda and would like it on the agenda, we should be able to put it on the agenda. So I am going to ask that when trustees ask for something on the agenda, it can be put on the agenda, voted. If it doesn't go anywhere, then it doesn't go anywhere. But there is the opportunity that most of the colleges are doing.
We're ready for a vote.
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
No.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
No.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 1.1, approval of consent agenda as presented?
Some move?
I would like to pull...
Wait till the second.
He did. I would like to pull 4.2.
4.2.1?
No, 4.2.
2.1. Oh, yes. And I want to pull 3.1 and 3.2.11.
Trustee Lee, were you pulling 4.2.1?
Yes.
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 Okay. And Trustee Broderick, you pulled 4.1 and 4.2.11?
I pulled 3.1 and 3.2.11.
3.1?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other items? We're ready for a vote. Karen?
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
First-pulled item 3.1, approval to pay the listing of bills for the period ending June 30 and July 31, 2024, as presented.
We need a motion, correct?
Yes.
Some move?
Second.
I would like to pull two of the bills on the page 2 of 3.1, which are to KGG for $8,695 and KGG for $21,750. I just... I had asked for the bills last week. I just got them this morning. They're very detailed, and this is more of an expense than I've ever seen with our previous law firms that we've ever had, which has been nowhere near this amount. We're at almost over $31,000. So I think all the board members should see the bills and look at them and review them. And I think we should delay this until next month's meeting after the board has reviewed this, because our fiduciary responsibility to our constituents is to know what we're approving. And I think this is unbelievably high charges, and it's not normal from what I've seen in my years here. And that's why I'm asking for the board to remove those and consider them for delay. And then the other one is, that I'm questioning, is the African-American, the ABA, one for $5,000, which I think is great. But I think that we all need to be, as trustees, included in things, and there should be no separation. All trustees should be included and invited to it when you have something of this nature. And I know that only two trustees and guests went, and I think that all trustees should be included. And I'll leave it at that.
I have a question for Karen Kissel. When we had Carl Buck, what was his monthly expense typically?
I don't have that information with me. I'd have to look it up for you.
How long will it take? Would it take for you to find that information?
Are you... Like, are you asking for that right now, or...
I mean, just, we could table it until we receive... I mean, I'm just wondering, $21,000 is a lot of money in one month. $9,000 is... I remember looking at the bills, and I don't ever recall seeing anything with that amount for Carl Buck, ever. And we retained him for a very long time. So, I mean, I would agree with Maureen to pull it without at least some sort of information to compare it to.
Could you just give me a few moments?
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other conversation on the listing of bills? Comments? Karen, we can take the vote?
Well, you're approving the bills as with these two in?
Absolutely.
I've asked to have them taken and removed.
And you asked for a copy of the bills, and itemized detailed bills, which you just said that you've received?
I just got them this morning with not ample time to review. And with this amount, Jim, being as high as it is...
So let me ask you. With all of what's going on with Title IX and all the complaints you keep making to the state, do you think he works for free? How many times are you going to file complaints against us?
I don't think he does, Jim, but you know what? That's not the question.
It is, but you're asking for...
The responsibility of each of us as a trustee is to look at this, to see. And I'm sorry, I don't approve of us just going ahead and approving something. I'm not a rubber-stamperer.
So keep in mind when you...
And you told us that Title IX was on pause. So what has he been doing with Title IX last month?
I didn't say anything about Title IX. What I said is all the complaints...
You said with all of the stuff he's been doing with Title IX and the complaints...
How many complaints have the two of you filed against this college with the state?
Well, just a summary that I've seen, it's been you and him and the president talking. And I don't know any... I haven't received any communication of what you guys, all three of you, have been talking about. So I would like to know. I would like to go through the bills.
You have the detailed bills.
Pardon me?
You have the detailed bills.
I got them...
So some of the conversations that we've been having is sitting there and listening to all the closed-session minutes, so that we can respond to the state of Illinois about why you're filing complaints against us.
Because of the May violations.
So you get to sit in the meeting with the closed session with a pencil and a pen and write stuff down, because we're not allowed to?
They have, they have.
I'm sorry?
You're allowed to go into the closed session.
There's a motion on the table I'd like to vote on.
Ready to vote?
Trustee Lee?
No.
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
No.
Trustee Harris?
At this point, I think the bills that were pulled... Maureen, have you looked and gone through those?
I didn't have enough time. I got them at 11 o'clock this morning. I haven't had a chance. I asked to have them printed. I can't get them printed, because they weren't on my desk to be printed to review, so I haven't seen them all in entirety. And there's, like, 60 pages.
I have to agree with Chairman Bazinski. We have used, probably overused, Brian. And I'm sure that his firm would like to see their payment. So I will say yes. But I also will say that after their definitely review, you could always bring this back for a dispute. But I would say yes, because the work has been done. And it's been a lot of work that has been done. And myself, as a small-business owner, if I had done some work, I would want to be paid too. But it can always be brought back.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 3.2.11, sole source, Workday Consulting for Human Resources, over 10% previous-approved amount.
I need a motion?
Some move?
Second.
Discussion?
My concern is, what is this person doing for us? Why would we have gone over if we have Workday people in the office? Every month, they were under the amount, under the amount. What does this company or this woman do for us that necessitates her being over the $36,000?
Trustee Broderick, thank you so much. We're going to just invite Judy to share some additional information with us on this one.
Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I want to mention that the contract that we have with this consultant is not duplicating services that we have with our AMS provider, Alchemy. We have been using Lisa and her company, Aolac Consulting, to augment our staff resources and assist us with this transition to Workday and our business processes related. In this particular fiscal year, we had some in-flight items when we approached the month of June that we wanted to wrap up related to the fiscal year processes, annual increases, and some things that we had and one of the tenants that we wanted to migrate over. So it was important for her to continue some of the things that we initiated. She spends a lot of time advising our staff. We have taken on significant responsibilities with Workday, as have financial services and the other entities that were previously centralized in our IT department. So we've talked about the contract before. It's a crucial need for us to have the consulting, but it's not duplicative with any of the other vendors that are supporting the Workday product.
But Judy, doesn't the work for HR become repetitive on what you do every year? So that the systems that you're doing last year, and you were on Workday, shouldn't they mirror what's going on this year, so that you could minimize the time of having Lisa on-premise and doing stuff?
There's... Yes, we're repeating transactions to the most, you know, for the most part. There are two releases that come out every year from Workday, which might have some tweaks. And then there's improvements that the college desires to do as well. So, for example, we're working on the TOSK new compensation structure. That's still ongoing. There might be just a glitch or something that we'd like to improve. We're adding, for example, some compliance-related items that we were maintaining outside of the system for hepatitis B vaccines, motor vehicle records, other things, driver abstracts. So it's like, okay, we want that in Workday. We kind of know what to do. We need some help. And then we would lean into Lisa for that. So again, it's just trying to improve what we've implemented, because the capabilities are really great, what we can be doing, and the efficiencies, so...
Does Workday have anything to help in the assistance when you say there's releases? Shouldn't they then be assisting in the implementation of those?
We do have a structure for how we handle the releases. We do a lot of that internally. We have a checklist. We have testing. But occasionally, we need, you know, like, a question. They also have significant documentation and Workday community that we can go out and we research. So when we engage Lisa, or when we engage our AMS provider, we've already done, like, a significant amount of our own work to try to learn and move whatever the request is forward.
How long do you think you'll keep needing this process of having Lisa with you?
You know, I recognize that we need it for at least the next upcoming year, which is what we came to the board for recently with the budget. I can't sit here and say for certain. It's one or two years. It depends on the needs of the college and the needs of the department as it changes, as we integrate with colleague.
Thank you.
But it is a different... I just want to reiterate, it is a different service than we get from the Workday support.
Nope.
We're ready for the vote, Karen?
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 4.2, approval of board policy. 4.2.1, policy 5.03.00, Title IX policy 24.
Make a motion to table it until Congress gives further direction.
Second.
Okay, the motion is to table?
Yes, ma'am.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again?
No.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Abstain.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under new and old business, item 4.1, diversity purchase, city center, fresh air climate.
Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to purchase some additional information, present, rather, some additional information on this. I'm just going to put Karen Kissel on deck here. I think we've shared some considerable information about the timing, the costs associated with this, and how it's disrupted. So what Karen's doing right now is she's put together So what Karen's doing right now is she's put together some updated cost information for the board, and she's going to hand that out to you now.
And this initially was a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollar quote?
Correct. Trustee Broderick, correct. Well, we should start there. Yeah, we should start there.
When you get that information out, Carl, will you email it to me, please?
So the good news is that we've selected a vendor that has assured us minimal disruption and full operation by September sixteenth. The bad news, of course, is the costs associated with that particular part are higher than we anticipated. Consequently, we're in conversations now and anticipate accessing some of our insurance benefits as a result. I'm not certain that I can in good conscience come to the board and, considering the cost of the repairs is now over a million dollars, tell the board that we should pay for that, all of it, ourselves. But let me just share an additional interest that we have as an administration, and I hope you share, is to minimize the long-term financial impact as well. With that in mind, our interest is to minimize the impact on future insurance premiums to ensure a building that's been valued at sixty million dollars. So as Trustee Broderick referenced, number four on this spreadsheet or grid that you see down below, previously, we brought that to the board at three-hundred-and-fifty thousand. The cost is now six-hundred thousand. And so I'm going to toss it over to Karen, and she may engage some others kind of to talk through some of the technical aspects of this emergency purchase. Karen?
So originally, Kluber Engineering is the one that estimated the cost of the fabrication and the installation of the plenum. They did send that drawing out to three vendors, and I provided you just a summary, just so you know. So they sent it out to three vendors. The first vendor declined a bid. The second vendor came in at seven-hundred-and-fifteen thousand. But most importantly, they said they couldn't do the work. It wouldn't be completed for ten to eleven weeks, which would mean we would have lost the entire semester. Thankfully, the third vendor, KWC, came in and worked with Pat Van Dyne and his team to come up with a way that we could operationalize the facility by September sixteenth, which is what was necessary to continue classes in that facility for the culinary students. So what they're going to do is they're going to put a temporary fix on the roof by putting a temporary airplane on. They're guaranteeing it by September sixteenth. Then after air conditioning season is over, they're going to come in and do a permanent fix. So that for the cost of six-hundred-and-one thousand dollars, which is a hundred-and-thirteen thousand dollars less than the other vendor. But we can operationalize our building, which is the most important thing for our two thousand students who are there and dozens of employees.
Question. In regards to the way it's laid out up there and the way it was laid out, can we define why? Because I thought we had plans that we could go back to. Could you help me understand why we're doing, why the cost is so more, so much more if we're not following the plans that were there? What are we doing to stabilize it so it doesn't happen again? What premeasures are we taking so that this doesn't ever occur again?
I might have to defer to that to Pat Van Dyne for that, but the drawing is different. So before, we had that hundred-foot-long by thirty-foot-wide by four-foot, four-foot-tall the airplane that ended up in the middle of the street.
Right.
Kluber Engineering redesigned that. So we're going to have two smaller airplanes, one on each side of the building. So it's going to be thirty feet wide by four feet. I'm making this... Thirty?
Thirty feet by thirty feet, okay.
Thirty by thirty by ten. They said it's a more efficient design, and it's less costly than having to do that complete hundred-foot by thirty-foot by four-foot like we had last time.
And what's the security? Because when you look at a million dollars, what's the security that this doesn't occur again? Because we all know, after watching Twister Two, if anybody's watched that, those can happen anytime. So what's going to prevent, what are we doing to prevent and securitize so that we're proactive and not having this happen again?
An engineering firm designed it. They understood what happened to the situation, so they designed it so it would be reinforced on the top of the building.
And then are we, we're going to, I think you said earlier, we're probably going to file against insurance companies as well?
At this particular point, we're going to have to.
Yes. So we won't be on the hook for the whole total amount.
Right. Our deductible is about six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
And then in regards to this, because I know we brought up the insurance last time, are we going to also, I know you're filing with the insurance anyway, but it doesn't cover as much because of the one percent issue. Are we going to also look to see if there isn't any other better coverage out there just so we don't have to pour out so much money for this type of a situation?
You know, every year when we work with A.J. Gallagher, they put the property insurance out to bid this past year. This was the, this was the most affordable property insurance available to us. Property insurance has gone through the roof because of all of the natural disasters that have been going, that have been occurring across the country. So this is just, this was the best option for us.
And did they all have the one percent windfall issued or the value issued then?
I can't answer the details of each one of the proposals that they reviewed on our behalf, but this was the most affordable for us, given the parameters of the policy. Jeff just shared that the other companies who bid on this portion of our property insurance wanted two percent of the value of our building. Thanks, Jeff.
So when was the last time we had an actual appraisal done then on the building? Because, I mean, people have said they feel that the value of the premise is higher than what it was. So I'm just asking if we...
To my knowledge, we have not had an appraisal of the building, but every year, the value of the building is increased through the...
That's normal for them to do, just like they do for our homeowners. They assess it higher. And some of us fight it because we know that we could get less than what it is, what they appraised it for. So I'm just asking. Okay. Thank you.
And I just wanted to publicly thank Pat Van Dyne and his entire team for their hard work in restoring that building. Like President Muo said, this happened on July fourteenth. And they came up with a solution and an action plan to get a roof on the building, to put the building automation system back in place, and to get these airplanes done to be able to meet the needs of our students. And I think that I'm just so proud to be working with that team.
And I've got to commend all of you that are on the emergency team. I came down because I was getting pictures sent to me when it was happening right away. You guys were on the spot, fast as could be, knew what you were doing. It looked like you had everything under control, and you had the adjacent police and fire department, everyone there. I think you did an extraordinary job.
Thank you for saying that. You did.
Still need a motion and a second.
First?
Go ahead. I have a question.
Wait.
Trustee Queenie, you made the motion?
Yes.
The motion is to approve a contract with KWC for six-hundred-and-one thousand dollars for the repairs?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Do you have a question, Diane?
Just so I'm clear, I might have slept this. This six-hundred-and-one thousand dollars is our cost after we file for insurance?
It's the cost of the contract. After we file insurance, our deductible is about six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So we would pay the first six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars of all the expenses, which includes people's time, any materials we use, anything else. And then the rest would be covered by insurance. So that's the number.
Can we bill your time to the insurance too as well?
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinsky?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion on 4.3 and 4.4 to continue to table those two items.
That's in proper Roberts Rules of Order. We can't put things on the table to avoid discussion.
You can't put something on the table that's on the table right now.
I want to keep it on the table, is what I said.
Right. There's a motion, the agenda calls for a motion to take from the table. You cannot retable the item until there's been some significant progress on it. And that would simply be discussion. It's in Roberts Rules of Order.
So item 4.3, taken from the table, June twenty-four, Agenda item 4.3, century number one of trustee Michelle Lee for making disparaging comments about Dr. Muo to college cabinet members as well as yelling at and moving, demanding action from the board assistant, all in violation of board policy 010300, trustee Code of Conduct. Chair calls for a motion to take the agenda item from the table.
So moved?
Second.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
No.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
No.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinsky?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Then I motion for 4.3.1 to table that one.
I think they have to vote on 4.3.1 first. Isn't there discussion for 4.3.1?
We can't yet discuss that because we haven't even read and asked for the motion. So at this point, there's nothing on the table to even discuss.
Well, let's get on with it.
You cannot yet make a motion to table.
Item 4.3.1, century number one of trustee Michelle Lee for making disparaging comments about Dr. Muo to college cabinet members as well as yelling at and moving, demanding action from the board assistant, all in violation of board policy 01.03.00, trustee Code of Conduct. The chair's calling for a motion and a second to approve the agenda item.
So moved?
Second.
I'm going to say something. With all of the stuff that has been said of whatever the disparaging comments are, because I got caught in this thing of whatever the disparaging comments are, without any due process, as our facilitator, Pam Fisher, said at our retreat, there's been no type of due process done here at all, nothing at all. I'd like to hear, who is the cabinet member that said it? I'd like to have the cabinet member come up and tell us what disparaging comments. Because that's an opinion. That's one-sided, as Pam said. Pam said the person that's being charged should have a due process. Where's the due process in this?
I'm going to caution you that we need to discuss this with Pam in closed session, so that can't be opened up.
Pam said.
It doesn't matter. It was in closed session. We shouldn't be discussing what Pam said was in closed session.
Due process? We talked about that afterwards too, due process.
There was due process when we were land-lasting our attorney, before he ever had a chance to respond.
Well, we don't have a due process, so there is no due process here, Jen, of the board member being able to respond. And I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear the cabinet member on what was said specifically. Here's the thing, guys, here's the thing. When we look at our ethics as a trustee, as a trustee, it says we are supposed to know things, the facts. It says trustee members, as members of the board, must preserve independence from undue influence outlined in the Illinois State Office's Employee Ethics Act. We must be informed on concerning issues to be considered at those meetings. We must have facts. I don't have facts. I can't support it without hearing what the disparaging comments were. And I'm going through the Code of Conduct, and we are responsible for knowing that. Based decisions upon all available facts in each situation, not influenced by a partition bias of any kind. I don't feel comfortable. I want to know what the disparaging comments are.
I can go ahead and add something. Were you going to share something, trustee Lee?
You can go ahead.
Okay. Just being respectful. So putting someone in a position who is part of our cabinet to actually share all of that information here at this time or at any space that we're together is not necessary and shouldn't be something that we are mentioning at all. In terms of the different things, this is the motion that we have on the table right now. This is the information that we have as of this second. So based on that motion, you can either support it or not, and that's all I have.
I would like to say that this is a violation of my due process as I did not receive notice of the allegation in order to have an opportunity to defend myself. I am not clear on the allegations. Are they as, as they are ambiguous and do not rise to conform with due process? There has been no evidence presented to support the allegations. Everything presented is hearsay and so proven. I need the allegations to be clarified and would like to retain private counsel to defend myself against these censures and how they may be used to deprive me of my fiduciary duty to my constituents. An improper implication by this board is that I carry the burden of proof on the issue of guilt and constitutes a due process violation. The due process clause requires that those who are accusing me, Dr. Muo, and the alleged cabinet members and the secretary of the board, to prove beyond a reasonable doubt all of the elements included in the definition of the offense of which I am being accused. Therefore, since all of the elements are not included in the definition of the offense of which I am being accused, and I do not have counsel here to defend myself to continue with these censures, would compromise my due process rights. As you have decided to continue with the censures, I would also like to say to the public, I have received overwhelming support from Chair Bazinsky, President Muo, administrative staff in the majority of this board, and my position as the ICCC, ACCT representative, and chair of the policy committee. But now, all of that has changed after a conference in Springfield where I brought to the attention of our state legislators that our counsel's response to an OCR complaint stating that JJC would voluntarily remove all references to the term "women" in twenty-two scholarships and the term "men" in two minority scholarships due to an alleged complaint of sex discrimination from a resident of Oklahoma. Bewildered that this response was sent without board notice or approval, I contacted all trustees to ask if they had read this letter of response to the Office of Civil Rights complaint. All trustees admitted they had not read the letter given to us at the end of the April BOT meeting due to the casual way in which the letter was delivered, handed to us at the end of the meeting with no explanation from counsel. Many had even misplaced the letter, and I had to provide them with a copy as the letter was not sent by email, so we have no hard copy. I asked the chair to call a special meeting for the board to discuss our legal counsel and to be informed as a whole about the handling of the OCR complaint. The entire board agreed to call the meeting except for the chair, forcing me to have three trustees agree to call the meeting. I received the support I needed. However, due to lack of support from the chair, the secretary of the board, Karen Resek, made it extremely difficult to call the meeting, making the trustees send in multiple emails of support using specific verbiage in their email. I originally asked the board to support me in reprimanding Karen for her interference in calling the special meeting. However, my requests have only fallen on deaf ears as the agenda clearly insinuates I should be censured for yelling and rudely demanding action. The chair, by Illinois state law, is responsible for creating the agenda. A man who once wholeheartedly supported me has now decided I need to be publicly censured for what President Muo refers to as questioning his integrity and character. And my questions and concerns have only been deemed disparaging comments worthy of public communication, humiliation by this board. It's interesting, Vice Chair Alicia Morales threatened me in a text message stating, "I get it. From everything you've told me, I believe Klein is very well aware of how well we feel about women's scholarships and how it was handled. We have a good working board, and you are a respected member." I don't want that to change. Girl, pray. We need to give each other the grace without condemning anyone. We can and will work civilly together, and we'll resolve this. It will all work out. So Klein and counsel Coltman are worthy of grace to be forgiven for their mistake of not informing the board of pertinent information, knowing the board did not agree to which this constitutes intentional exclusion of information. As President Muo was aware, the board did not agree with removing references to men and women from twenty-two out of the seven hundred scholarships offered by the JJC Foundation. DARVO is an acronym used to describe a common strategy of abusers. Deny the abuse, then attack the victim for attempting to hold them accountable for their offenses, thereby reversing victim with offender. Denial of responsibility is a common tactic used. This form of denial avoids evolving personal responsibility, blaming a direct statement and shifting culpability, which is exactly what is being done here to me.
Stop. If they're going to be ethical trustees, they'll vote no. If they vote yes, they're not being ethical trustees. So let them vote.
Trustee Broderick?
No.
Trustee Lee?
No.
Motion carries.
Item 4.4, taken from the table from the June twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four agenda, item 4.4, century number two of trustee Michelle Lee for sharing her JJC data and password with another, in violation of board policy 10.01.00, information security governance. Call for a motion to take this from the table.
So moved?
Second.
Trustee Garcia again?
Um, yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
No.
Trustee Harris?
No.
Trustee Lee?
No.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinsky?
Yes.
Three to three does not hear.
He probably got paid about six-hundred-and-one thousand for Brian.
It's just disparaging.
I would like to state for the record, is it for discussion now?
No, the vote's over.
We're done.
No, for 4.41?
No. 4.5?
You didn't vote on this one. You voted just to take...
We're not going to vote on it because it wasn't taken from the table.
Okay.
4.5, Resolution 2024 R-03, affirming policy governance in board communication. Chair calls for a motion in support or second to approve the agenda item.
So moved?
Is there a second?
At this point, there's no second, so we will move on to the next agenda item. Item 4.6, declaring a vacancy on the board of trustees as of August twentieth, twenty-twenty-four, with the resignation of trustee Mahalik, and actually, August twenty-first of twenty-twenty-four.
So moved?
Second.
Jacobs, with heartfelt, that we're going to miss you. And I'm sorry that you are leaving us, but you've been with us for a while. You've done a lot of good things, and we appreciate you.
Thank you, Maureen, appreciate it, so.
And enjoy the kids.
Enjoy the kids and the work, so that's good, so thanks, appreciate it, so.
Ready for a vote?
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under Section 5, under Reports, 5.1, Student Trustee Report. Ryan Queenie.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. So, this fall, as you've all heard, we did start classes again this last week and we are thrilled to actually welcome, and I went to look up in the board book earlier this afternoon, we are welcoming 8,500 students here on campus this semester. So, to our returning students, welcome back to the college. And to our new students, welcome aboard. Let's make this semester, I'm, sorry. So, yeah, let's make this semester unforgettable and really work to shape the future. So, given that, before we get into it, I wanted to help, yeah, welcome. And then I wanted to give an update on some of the recent campus and community events that I had had the honor of attending as student trustee. So, the first event I actually was able to attend was an event called Green Drink, which is an international event put together by environmentalists across the nation. And they will organize together to bring in sustainable initiatives and start promoting them in whole info sessions during those times. So, a sustainability union actually invited me to come to the one in July this last summer to come and hear them talk about and promote the Repair Cafe initiatives out of Romeoville campus. And it was just a wonderful event and it was great to see so many members of the community engaging and people getting excited about the Repair Cafe. Then, the next event I was able to attend this summer was the JJC Steel Band Concert, which if you haven't seen the Steel Band or attended their concerts, take some time and go see them. It's really cool and it's just a great time. That's actually a picture from the Steel Band concert with students who actually go to school here and many of you may recognize Zach Hamidi, then Carlo Lozano, Olive, and then, of course, Ash Klinder, myself, and Joy. And that was just a wonderful night. Then, we also this week did start, or not this week, last week, we also had our new student advising, which was a wonderful opportunity to greet new students and experience what, or see what their experience is as they go through the new student advising process that has completely been updated and changed, actually. And it was really cool because that was not the process that I had when I started. So, it was, yeah, and just it was nice to see all the new students preparing to attend classes for the first time in the fall. And then, of course, this week, we also did kickoff Welcome Week with the CMOS Block Party, which I actually held an event at myself, a meet and greet to take some time and hear from the students, just introduce myself, let them know what the Board of Trustees here does, and just hoping to create an open line of communication with students so that I can connect with my peers and hear about more various issues and ideas they have for JJC. So, then, before I get into the upcoming events to talk about, I did want to quickly just say this last July, the board did take a retreat with, to Romeoville with Pam Fisher, which it went very well. And since then, I've actually had the opportunity of following some of Pam Fisher's work. So, I don't know if any of you caught the article in Trustee Quarterly this last month, but really good read, if you have a chance. There are some great points in there about how boards act and how boards will work together to promote the interest of the college to ensure that they are working in a positive direction. Of course, it also, I also then also had the opportunity to attend a webinar that Pam Fisher and ICCCA held, which was when the dissenting trustee becomes the disruptive trustee. And it was a really nice hour of just discussion and hearing about different ways to address poor board behavior. And it talked about setting policy and governance to ensure that when we do find behaviors that we are not okay with as a board, that we have a way of addressing and moving forward from them. So, then, thank you. So, as, so yes, now, the upcoming events, and these are some really exciting things. So, with Welcome Week kicking off, there is still many things to come tomorrow. There will be the OSA picnic in the Grove. And again, as I held a meet and greet table this last, or today, earlier this afternoon, I will be holding one tomorrow afternoon to, again, take the time to just meet students, interact. And I do invite some of, any of my trustees who'd like to join to come and spend some time tomorrow with me at the picnic in the Grove to meet students as well.
What time?
It will be from 11 to 3 o'clock. Or no, 12 to 3, I'm so sorry.
12 to 3?
Yes.
Thanks, Ryan.
And then, of course, on Thursday this week, there will also be the Game Room Open House on the Bridge with OSA, where they will, so they, over the summer, I don't know if many of you knew this, but they added a bunch of games to the bridge, which is really exciting because it's going to start bringing students back to the bridge as a hangout space.
And a pool table.
Yes, and a pool table. But they added a pool table, a skee ball table, a shuffleboard table, a basketball net.
I saw those in all the bills.
Yes. And it's been, it's very exciting for students and I encourage any of the students who are here today who haven't had any chance to go check it out, please take some time. So, yes, and of course, then additionally, on Friday this week, there will also be an OSA movie on the lawn, I believe outside the Romeoville campus this semester. And that starts around, I think, 5:00 or 6:00 that night. And they'll be showing the movie Elemental, which I haven't actually seen that, but I've heard very good things. So, if you have some time, check it out. Of course, then there is also going to be a voter registration drive coming up on August 28th this month.
I'm a registrar. If you need any assistance, let me know.
Yeah, I will check with that, yes. And there will also be goat yoga coming back to the campus, which I don't know if any of you remember goat yoga, but a lot of people really enjoyed it. So much so that there will actually be goat yoga from, on the 17th, from 10:00 a.m. till 12:00 for our students here at the college and then for the faculty and staff who really enjoyed it. There will also be goat yoga from 12:00 to 1:00 that day for those staff who want to get involved and engage with that, too. So, thank you. Then, very quickly, another wonderful event I wanted to quickly share with all of you was an event that Dr. Amy Gray actually invited and asked for my help putting together, which was the Academic Update Student Panel. And so, early or last month, Dr. Amy Gray approached me with an idea of hosting this panel and asked if I had known any students who should be considered for the panel. Now, this panel gave a lot of students an opportunity to share with their professors and faculty information that we don't normally get to share with them before a class starts. So, I was able to pull some really great students for it, including Wyatt Miller, Coda, Gray, and Felicia Apedio, and then also Max Battles, and then Felicia, oh, Felice, I'm sorry, Leslie Valerio, and then, of course, Felicia sitting next to me. And then, of course, myself, I was on the panel as well. But some of the significant topics that we did cover were the preferred name usage in the classrooms and on agendas for the faculty, which I know since then, DEI and the, and Christopher have worked really hard to make sure that those systems are in place where they need to be for classes to start. So, thank you both so much. I know once the students really talk about it, you all hit the ground running with it. So, thank you. And then, there was also talking about putting together more common structured formatting for online classes for the students as well as just, and making sure that students take the time and professors are affording students the opportunity to be involved on campus as students. So, taking students to the Welcome Week events, taking them to the Main Street, all sorts of wonderful things. So, again, thank you to all the students who participated. Thank you, Amy Gray, for helping organize this. And this whole week, I've been being stopped in the hall hearing from teachers saying how much they enjoyed this. So, let's do it again sometime. But then, of course, I did just want to finish off tonight by giving you all just a quick brief update on the student trustee project I've been working on, which is the Community College Baccalaureate Degrees. So, since we last spoke, I have worked with Kelly Roderenelli to finalize survey information that the ICCCA and Tim Harmon have been seeking that includes the different degree types here at JJC, which I worked with the academics department to get that information to send over. And then, they will be hopefully finalizing the survey this month and releasing it in September. And additionally, I've also continued researching Community College Baccalaureate Degrees and what it looks like to bring those to states that don't have them. So, thank you all.
If you want more information, too, Bill Kelly from Harper is the one that heads this from the ICCCA. I can connect you with him if you need that information because he's right in the groundwork of it.
Wonderful. Yes, that would be wonderful. But then, thank you all so much. And that's all I have, so I'll yield back.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Queenie.
Item 5.2. Item 5.2, Representative to the JJC Foundation, Kristi Moby. No report. 5.3, Representative to the ICCCA ACCT.
There was an executive committee meeting that I did not attend. Diane is a part of the awards committee, so she attended it as well as Maureen. So, if you two would like to say anything?
I'd be glad to. The meeting was held on August 9th and 10th down in Decatur. Our new president of the ICCCA is Bishop Wayne Dunning. We talked about the development of the 2024 to 2027 ICCC strategic plans. We talked about the Business Enterprise Program, the BEP, which is a big concern for all of the procedures for the RFPs and everything. That's becoming a big issue. And that is being worked on with the, everybody, the presidents, the ICCB, the ICCA. We're all working to do whatever we can to make sure that everyone knows in the minority areas of what they have to do and how to get certified so that they qualify, so that we have, that there's no problems with it going forward. We had special offense, but here, I'll tell you what the president's goals were. He wants to visit all the college campuses. He wants to reinforce the mission and vision statements. And, Ryan, just so you know, he wants a student trustee spotlight at each board meeting that we have. So, be prepared, he's got your number.
All right, I'll do it.
Okay? And then, he wants to renew the focus on anything of AI, which is what's all becoming a big issue now with AI. And then, here's something that came out of the group that I thought was extremely interesting and very sensitive to the fact on budgets. And since I had questions and we talked about that, the CFOs have a workshop before they even put the budget out for the 30-day review. This allows all of the trustees to come in with their questions ahead of time and get them answered, so that we're not struggling during that 30-day period to find out what we need to ask or whatever. We can do it prior to, and they do call it a CFO workshop. And then, the nice thing, Brian Durham from the ICCB, the CEO, admits that there's 30 million still in workforce grants that have not been assigned yet. And they are waiting anxiously for it. And once they know, they are going to then set it up for each of the schools to have. So, we were all excited about that. The next meeting is September 13th and 14th for the ICCC in Springfield. And the topic for discussion is how to do a presidential search. And that's because the presidents will be elsewhere. I think they're in Peoria, if I'm not mistaken. And our education manager, our chair, decided to do that. And it's going to be good because it's the same company that we used when we found and went through our search. So, it worked out really well. And then, we did have some things, bear with me on this one, that was brought legislative-wise. We still want to protect the local control of community colleges, equitable funding for community college operations, community college baccalaureate degrees, as you talked about, protect student borrowers using MAP funds, prepare Illinois future workers. And we are still concerned, still going to keep our anti-racism statement. And that concludes my report on this. We really had a great meeting. We got to see all of Decatur, Richland's Community College. Nice tour, it was a great opportunity. Thank you.
Item 5.4, trustee updates. Let's turn this aside. Ryan?
I just want to say thank you again to Jake for all your years of service. I know I've only been on the board a short time, but you will be missed and I'm grateful that I've been able to work with you for the time I have. And I wish you all the best in your future endeavors. So, thank you again on behalf of myself and all the students here for all you've done.
Appreciate it, so.
Yes.
No updates, you already have my updates.
You have your update? Ms. Garcia again?
Yeah. Let me go ahead and turn it on. I just want to wish all our students good luck this school year as well as any other students at elementary school, middle school, high school as we start this school year. Thank you, that's all I have.
Diane?
Yeah, I have a few things. Are you going to turn that clock on? Okay. First, I want to say I love the college, the middle school, the future wolves. I just think that is the best program we could ever have invested in. I really, really do. And then, also, the ICC program or the meeting that I attend, or when I have the opportunity to go, I want to say thank you for allowing me to go because every time I go, I expect to bring something from there that will help me to be a better trustee. And I think that a lot of us that do attend, we gather the information, but we forget to act on some of it. And I think that is the important process. Acting on the takeaways. We have to start showing that we understand what we're being taught there to be a good trustee. Also, I want to mention that they talked about in the Business Enterprise Program, what's working and strategies for solutions for better compliance, how to define success and stagnation. And that, what I picked up on that part is when we, as trustees and as companies, working with other companies, the measure of success is the relationships with each other. That is very important. So, I just wanted to throw that out there. So, whenever I go to these meetings, know that I'm not there just to be there. Anything I learn, I want to bring it back in my actions. I want that to show that I'm appreciative of being there and that it's helping me to move forward to be a better trustee. And can I, can I just say, it was nice working with Jake. We, I've known Jake's family for a long time, but for some reason, when I got on the board, I didn't even relate the two. But it's been a pleasure and I'm sure my heater will go out sooner or later and you'll be hearing from me. But thank you for all that you've done here.
I hope not, I hope not.
Thank you, thank you for that you've done here at JJC.
Trustee Lee?
I want my constituents who voted for me to know I was censured tonight for staying true to my fiduciary duty to hold President Nmua and counsel Coltman accountable for their actions to remove the term "men" and "women" from scholarships without board notice or approval that directly and indirectly have had negative implications on the college. To be publicly chastened for exercising my fiduciary duty as a trustee to the constituents who elected me to do so, it is an honor to stand up for women's rights, men's rights, parental rights, and the rights of our children. I will not back down.
Trustee Broderick?
Couple of things. One, I want to give policy, the ability to upgrade the meeting issues because tonight, I didn't even know how tonight's meeting got called because it says we had to have the chair plus a quorum. So, I don't know how the meeting got called. So, I think that needs to be addressed as well as special and emergency meetings need to be called. And here's all the stuff that I have, that's one. Two, I'd like to see a 12 by 12 by 12 update because we keep bragging about it and it's not where we're in the weeds. We want to know what it's about, how we're doing, where we're going, what we need to still spell out because some of us are in the classrooms and we'd like to be able to say, when we see the chairs or the instructors, this is what we're doing because we're supporting it and advertising it. But we'd like to know where we stand with it. So, if we could have a 12 by 12 by 12 program, which I had asked for last month on one of my agenda requests, that was it. I'd also like to see an update, because I, for what it's worth, I get the, what do you call it, the finders for job situations. And I see that we've got CIO and VP position. What's going on with that with the search update?[1779.11] I'm recommending that, this is the third time I'm bringing it, I'd like to see that we put it on the agenda. And the last one that I'm going to talk about is, we need to add a conflict of interest on trustee Morales. In regards to the LMIC municipal code 65ILCS 5/3.1-1515 prohibits elected and appointed officials from holding other offices under the municipal government during their term of office unless they are granted a leave of absence. This includes mayors, presidents, aldermen, trustees, clerk, and treasurers. And the Attorney General concluded and stated as a matter of law, the acceptance of a second incompatible office by the incumbent of another office constitutes an ipso facto resignation of the first office. Therefore, she'd be released from those positions.
We have, we have a legal opinion that came to us today that disputes that, so your time, your time's expired.
Well, I'm, I'm going to say this.
Your time is expired. Your time is expired, we're moving on.
Well, my time may have expired, but you interrupted and said something. There is, there is court, there are court cases, appellate court cases, showing that the Attorney General has pushed, as it was in the Prairie Community College, their trustee had to be removed.
The chair reports for tonight, and I actually going to have one. We talk about due diligence and our behavior here. I want to inform the college community that this college has retained an independent firm to investigate employee grievances against members of this board. Members of the board, the cabinet, the administration, and staff may be contacted, and as a chair, I would expect full cooperation. We can move on to item number six. Chairs requesting a motion for a closed session under 2C1, 2C3, and 2C8.
Second. Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We go back to regular sessions?
Second.
Okay, motion. Is anybody here?
Second.
Okay, second, who seconded it? Maureen? Oh, no, we have to, this one, we have to do a roll call on? Okay, hold on. Okay, trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick? Trustee Harris?
Wow! No, fine, that was her.
Trustee, trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
I don't think we have a quorum anymore.
Motion carries. Okay. All right. Motion for adjournment?
Aye. Oh, yes.
Any motion?
Second.
Second? No, you made the motion, who's in the second?
Oh, all right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We're out.